For your patient. We are calling this meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda, as always, is accentuate the positive.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Um, welcome to Talent Elementary. I'm happy to be here finally. When you're here, that was just a fluke. Um, but Heather Lo, obviously, principal over here. Um, I'm excited that tomorrow we're having our annual Jog-a-thon, which we're turning into quite the affair. Um, it's going to be a color run. So if you want to see a lot of chaos and a lot of smiles and some exercise, come on by. It's going to be right at 1:30. So we'll be, we've got some of that non-toxic powder dye stuff that's made of cornstarch. And um, got some pretty awesome prizes for the top winners. Apparently if I, the kids earn 7,000, I'll be kissing a pig in front of them. 8,000 gets them uh, some new hair color for me. And then I think 10 grand gets me working on the roof. So they're all pretty excited. And then the top earner gets to be principal for a day. So I'm quite looking forward to that. Um, Everly's actually, I think I want to be principal. Like, no, you know. So it's been, it's been fun. And that happened actually when I was gone. So coming back to learning I was going to kiss a pig was awesome news. Um, also coming up uh, on the 31st, we have our kind of end of the year uh, family engagement event, our spring showcase, we're calling it. And it'll be a great evening. We're going to be kind of partnering with um, Rogue World Music and Rogue Valley Farms School and our art show. And then we'll be doing some celebrations around all of the academic focus that we've been doing. So that's the 31st um, at 5:00. And then speaking of showcases, we've been really um, really focused on our spring assessments and kind of doing a concerted effort in a show what you know campaign with our kiddos, really trying to get them to take the assessment seriously. So and we're like preliminary data is looking really good. We're not quite done with all of them, um, but it looks great. And we're about two percentage points away from our targets for this year. So I'm feeling really proud of our teachers and our support staff who've made that happen. Um, so just want to say thank you to, of course, all of our testing team who has to suffer through that. Um, you know, our title teachers and our support staff in there and our ERC support staff. And of course, classroom teachers. Corinne's even been testing kids. So um, just a deep gratitude to them. So that's it from Talent.
Thanks Heather. Good evening. My name is Shawna Schleif, principal at Phoenix Elementary School. And I could just say echo to everything that Heather said. Um, we, we so I want to give a shout out to all of our teachers for the hard work that they do day in and day just our classified staff are creating a really special week for them. It was really fun and festive. Um, we also are having a spring actually next Wednesday. And so we look forward to um, kind of rounding out our family engagement work around reading and celebrating the, the great success we have around building capacity with our families to help support reading at home. So we'll be um, meeting next week from 5:00 to 6:30 and we'll enjoy some tamales together. And just, we're also having an art showcase as well. So I just want to give a big shout out to our front office staff. We're having a bit of a friendly school competition with the other schools around registration. And so let's just put it this way, I haven't registered my children yet. And not so I just want and um, Wendy for just doing a great job of re, like reaching out to families and making sure we have really great up to date information. So that's it from PES.
Hello, Brandon Hammond Orchard Hill Elementary. My apologies. This is my post-surgery outfit. I won't be able to take advantage of this attire very much longer. So you know, back, I need to have certain shoes on. Makes me feel good. Um, anyway, so just my first shout out is for Maria Lee. I was gone for a week and a half and absolutely did not have to worry about it. There was no stress. Maria did awesome. Truly, thank you so much for her um, while I'm gone. Um, another thing is Mrs. Walcott, she's our music teacher. On May 22nd, we really want everyone to come. We're doing an elementary choir. I don't know if this has ever been done here. No. So it's going to be at the middle school at 5:30, May 22nd. Just Mrs. Walcott for all the effort and hard work. This truly was just, hey, I want to do this. And then she just started running with it. So very cool. Um, the other thing is, so just a quick analogy. Um, before, before I was going in for surgery, you're, I'm laying on this bed. The nurse comes over and starts filling my space with air. And it's this warm air. And I'm like, what are, what are you doing? And it's, and there was apparently some research that showed if my body temperature is at a certain point, I will heal faster and recover stronger. I'm like, wow, that is crazy. And it made me think, obviously, of the data that we use. And right now, again, we're doing testing, not as far as long as the other schools. But when we get to a point, I will share that. But the testing does nothing if we don't do anything with it. Um, and I, and I reiterate that also with a staff survey that we're going to be doing. If we do not take that input and then move it forward, it's useless. Same thing if they found this really cool fact about hot air and body and helps you heal. If they didn't do anything with it, there'd be no point. So really excited for all the work that we are doing now that will absolutely help us in the future.
While the mic is on this slide, good evening board. Tiffany Lambert, Assistant Superintendent. Today is National Speech Language Pathologist Day. There is such a thing. So I'd like to thank our speech and language pathologists. Um, Jaclyn Fortner, Carmen Edwards Henry, Tatiana Ramos Gallardo, and Jodi Corepta and Kelly Reed. Uh, of them, we're amazed by them every day. Yesterday, I mentioned for the seraphimists. And we had three Phoenix High School seniors get the Voc Tech awards. And it was really fun when I walked in. I got to see Rick Nagel and Yolanda, his wife. Um, it was nice to see them in that space. And then they announced that uh, Rick had donated the funds for the lunch at the Ashland Hills Hotel. So I really wanted to accentuate that positive. So thank you, Rick. It was a very nice
Evening Board, Aaron Santi, Phoenix Talent Rising Academy. Just a few quick notes for us. We're gearing up to uh, end the year. We've got celebration planning. Um, our last art in the park for the year is tomorrow morning with our elementary students out at Blue Heron Park uh, for a science and art project along with games and snacks. That happens at 11:00 AM. We're organizing a popsicles in the park day to collect Chromebooks. As you guys can imagine, all of our students are remote. And so to get those Chromebooks back is sometimes a challenge. So we try to entice them in with popsicles. Um, and small bribery. Um, and we're getting really excited actually about celebrating our eighth graders. So we're, we've got our certificates being printed, uh, Tux Donuts have been ordered. And we've got uh, field, final field trip on the Hellgate jet boats set up for them and their actually, no, just them and our staff. Their families don't get to come this time. But we're excited about that. So we're packing as much fun as we can into the last three weeks of school.
Thank you, Aaron. Catherine Holden, Principal of Talent Middle School. Uh, as you might imagine, spring is an exciting time for all of us and particularly at the middle school. And I think maybe Brandon and Kalen might be able to uh, relate to this. But as a first year principal, it feels like you've learned a lot. And yet until you complete and finish the year, you're still learning a lot about how the year ends. So feels like it's still exciting time to understand about the traditions and the ceremonies and kind of how we wrap up the year to celebrate. We're winding down our testing, which has gone well, and I really appreciate all the support with that. And then I just wanted to say a big thank you to our teacher leader group this year. Um, I brought together some teacher leaders to again, help me understand sort of what has been done in the past and how we could improve upon that. So Sandra Tringalo, Jen Baker, Julie Stinson, and Jamar Boyd. And they're certainly helping a lot with the planning and organizing of the end of the year activities. As well as a big thank you to Crystal and Amy and all the Sedexo folks um, for just their wonderful partnership as we've thrown some alternative schedules at them and some alter, we've asked some alternative asks to support some of our field days and our end of the year activities. So we really appreciate that. Uh, we also want to recognize and celebrate once again, I feel like our track season has been celebrated. But I just wanted to add a few more stats. Um, like I've mentioned, we had over 100 athletes, which was just a huge turnout. And 65 of those athletes qualified for the Psalmsack District Meet. And 12 of those athletes, as well as five relay teams placed fourth or above during the district meet. So just really proud of those, as well as we had four individual athletes take first place overall in their event. So a huge thank you. I don't think I've named all the coaches. Julie Ponder, Cindy Rutherford, Brittany Potts, Amber Jacobson, and Chad Arnold D for their contributions to such a successful season. And lastly, we also had a really sweet teacher appreciation week, a lot of fun celebration. And um, it just felt like we involved a lot of people. Our community leadership teacher, Iris Moya, and her students did a number of things to celebrate our teachers. They made posters, they made lanterns, um, they did a really cute PowerPoint with pictures of our teachers from when they were in middle school, um, as well as the district office, the board members, the administrative team, the classified team. It just really felt like we packed it in and it was very sweet. One of the teachers yesterday said, wow, that was, that was like the first year where it felt like everyone was involved. And so that was a really, really nice sentiment to know that we celebrated them well. So thank you.
Good evening board. Kalen Cross, Principal of the high school. Um, the spring is a really busy time for all of us. And I would echo what Catherine has said about learn a lot. Um, I actually am coming up on my one year of being here. I think it passed like last week. And I'm continuing to learn things. So I just wanted to thank you again for that opportunity to be here last spring. I really feel like I'm walking into graduation season, um, knowing quite a bit more than I would have if this was my first go around. And I'm thankful for that. So thank you. Um, a couple of things, and I'll try to be quick, especially because I know lots of times our student reps uh, talk about some of the things I'm going to. So hopefully we don't double dip. Um, the first thing I wanted to say was actually thank you to a group of parents, specifically um, to Kendra Bolstad and Deana actually here this evening. They um, spearheaded our grad night committee um, over the course of the last several months and had a culminating event last weekend, uh, or the weekend before last. Anyway, they raised $28,000 for the graduating seniors. And um, it was so fun. It was amazing. And I just wanted to thank them. And there was a lot of senior help in that and a lot of local businesses and, and our community members who just supported that. And it was really phenomenal. I can't say enough about it. Um, I also wanted to uh, shout out to, we have quite a few sports and activities. Uh, our sports are traveling this uh, weekend. And Dave is actually not here this evening because we have a theater production going on. And we're really excited about it. We've partnered with some ATI students to um, give just a really great show this weekend. So if you have a chance, there are several different shows um, tomorrow night and two on Saturday that you should catch if you have an opportunity. Um, also, uh, we were able to select our valedictorians and salutatorians for the class of 2023 um, in the last week. And before I announce who those people are, I just want to say, um, even though I've only been at PHS for a year, I um, am, I'm really sad to watch our seniors graduate because I know you all know this, but we have phenomenal students. It makes me emotional, um, because they're just, they're, it doesn't matter who, uh, name I announce. They are servant leaders. They are community oriented. Every single one of them has like a phenomenal story. They're funny. They're fun. So anyway, um, all the seniors, just, they're awesome. Um, but our valedictorians this year are Julius Bolstad, Morgan James, Kyla Potrats, and Anthony Sanchez. Very well deserving um, students. And then our salutatorians this year are Isladi Alvarez, Melody Chavez Corona, and McKenna Rowenhurst. So uh, yeah, very um, very well deserved honors. Um, lastly, I just wanted to say that um, you might be aware of a lockdown situation that we had on our campus. Um, I believe it was last week, though I could be wrong because it's been a long couple of days. Um, but overall, I just wanted to shout out to our staff as a whole and our students who um, did an amazing job of just following training and procedures. Um, you know, the best way to learn something is um, to just like have to do it in real life. And you find out a lot about what your go-to um, words or strategies or actions might be. And so um, though it was not a situation I would wish on anyone, I just want to say that our staff and our students handled it phenomenally. I'm so thankful for our continued partnership with um, the local police departments. Our SRO is, you know, great. And um, we learned a lot. And I'm, though I'm, wouldn't wish it on anybody, I'm thankful that it happened so that we can learn some things. And notably, I'd like to say that afterwards, after, you know, we had figured out the situation and we were able to come out of our lockdown or lockout, um, the way teachers and staff cared for students um, also makes me emotional because it wasn't about jumping back into academics, but it was really about connecting with kids and, and noticing their anxiety level and figuring out how we could just get them back to a regulated state. Um, I'm sorry to be emotional, but it was just really phenomenal. I'm very proud. And I'll end on that.
Thank you very much. Uh, anything from the board? I didn't see Amy here, right? She shared a PDF to look at with the future chef stuff. So take a look at that.
Thank you. Um, thinking back on what was already said. The community and the parents here are amazing. I went to the senior auction. I went to the plant sale. I went to, and the support that the, that the students are getting are amazing. And the, and the students, I can just tell the feeling of knowing their support. I went to the FFA where they did for the high school. Peyton gave me a tour of the whole thing. It was amazing. And but you could just tell the confidence and they know that they're supporting and they like, what can we do next? What can we do next? And I love that um, attitude that we have helped our students get. And they feel supported in supporting them. So I think it's amazing that parents and staff and the community are all supporting our um, students because that does not happen very often.
Thank you. Anything else? Next is citizens comments. Did we receive any comments? Oh, see, oh. Sorry. Student rep report. Sure, you guys, you don't have anything to share? May, do you? Student rep report.
Well, first off, um, the FFA Kids Day went really well. I know the little kids loved it. And I definitely know the high schoolers loved running their booths. They had so much fun with it. Um, next Tuesday is the, our symphonic band's last concert at 6:30. And Link Crew had just got done with their Made of Element Day to help get new leaders in. And that went really well. That happened yesterday. And Link Crew is now getting ready for their freshman field day, which is um, just a day where the kids, the freshmen get out early and get to have snow cones. There's a water slide, an obstacle course, and so much other fun stuff for the kids to do to end their freshman year. And Disney Club is doing another churro and sticker sale next Tuesday as well. That's all I got.
Okay. Hello. Um, I just wanted to say yesterday, multicultural club held a super cool event. There was like all these booths that different kids around our school got to do and like represent different like cultures and different countries. And it was so cool. They had different foods and different like music playing and like different just culture things like, it, it was just such a cool opportunity to experience. And like, we got to have these passport things and go to each booth and learn more about a country. And it was just, it was really a good opportunity. And I'm glad that we got to do it. And so, yeah, I'm really proud of that event. And I'm glad that the multicultural club got to do that. Also, the seniors are just kind of wrapping up our senior capstones. That's been a long process. We're still kind of in the middle of it, but I'm really like proud of my fellow seniors because we've just all been sharing and getting out of our comfort zones and talking to each other. And just it, it's been, it's been really great. And yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. And thank you, everyone, for keeping me on track. Okay, um, next is citizens comments. I don't believe we received any comments cards. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak before the board? Okay. And I don't think we have any online. Unless John wanted to speak, but I think he's going to speak later. Okay. Um, superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. Uh, I, I just have one short uh, we had a safe schools interagency team meeting, our final one for the uh, school year. We have four every year, once a quarter. Um, and so we had that on Wednesday. Uh, it was great to wrap up the year. A lot of positive comments. We, we talked about the lockdown and uh, kind of a district perspective as well and, and learned a lot. So uh, I echo Kalen's um, words on you don't wish that upon anybody, but it really um, puts you in a situation to where you find out real fast about where um, how people are going to react and what, where some of the holes may be. So um, SRO Hall and Sergeant Lehman uh, gave a good uh, review of that. Uh, and we had some things that we took care of right away on just some communication. So that's all I wanted to share um, for that.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Next is our program report instructional coaches. I'll leave you to tee that up. And then they know they have only two hours, so.
We are very fortunate to have amazing instructional coaches. And um, it's definitely moving the dial on uh, supporting our staff and improving student achievement. And just look forward to hearing uh, them share with you. It's a valuable uh, piece of how we do action and I'm looking forward to hearing from them.
All right. Good evening. We are your instructional coaches um, for the Phoenix Talent Schools. Go ahead, next slide. So we're going to take just a minute to introduce ourselves so you know who's talking.
Good evening. I'm Lori Evans. I'm the instructional co, coach at Orchard Hill.
I'm Derek Doherty. I'm instructional coach at the high school.
I'm Corinne Calhoun. I'm the coach chair at Talent Elementary. Thank you for having us.
And I'm Pam Ward. I'm the instructional coach at Phoenix Elementary. And Jamar Boyd is our instructional coach at um, Talent Middle School. And she was unable to be here this evening. So this is our mission of our instructional coaching program. Um, the mission is to increase growth and learning for students and faculty in a collegial environment built upon trust and collaboration. And so the two images you see up there are two guiding works that we've been following for the last two years. Um, Elena Aguilar, The Art of Coaching. And that's her main book. She has several, several more that we love. And then the Carnegie Foundation Summit on Improvement in Education. We've been lucky enough to go two years in a row and really dive in to the nitty gritty around improvement science and how that impacts student achievement.
So very briefly, so we only um, take our 10 minutes. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the work that we do, what our focus um, work is at each of the schools. Um, this year, we have spent a lot of time with our teachers, helping support them with the new curriculum. So we do have the new reading curriculum by Amplify. And just learning the curriculum and delivering it has um, been a lot of the work that we've done with teachers. We also each have um, helped with the facilitation of the academic leadership teams at each school. That's part of the distributive leadership um, model that uh, the schools are using. And on that team, there are both certified and classified staff that are working together. Um, really to improve uh, instructional practice and student achievement. We also do that work with the uh, grade level PLC teams. And so with the PLC teams, we really dive into the data and um, use the data to drive our instructional practice. That leads us to our PDSA cycles. And um, again, that's about continuous improvement. Um, much of what we learned with, at the Carnegie Summit and um, looking at making small changes. It reminds me of what Brandon said about the heat, right? They, they learned that that helps. So we're looking at what small changes we can make both in instructional practices and in um, and, and just improving uh, student outcomes. Finally, uh, not finally, but the last one I'm going to talk about is the CEEX program. So the district did bring in um, the CEEX program, which is by Emily Rubin. She has a peer, teacher-peer-mentor program to um, improve or increase student engagement. So we have worked with the teachers on leading uh, the work of that team.
And then and then for secondary math instruction, the focus has been uh, moving from passive mimickers to real thinkers and doers of math. And our focus is getting the students to talk about math with each other uh, as part of growth for teachers and students.
So at the end of last year, we conducted a survey of the staff to um, just check in and see how was coaching for you for the first year. And we use that to guide our practice and to improve our coaching model. And we're not quite there this year, so we don't have that to share. So we decided to like do a little dipstick, if you will, just to see where people are right now. So we all reached out to our colleagues and we asked them for feedback. Could you give us a, a quote or could you do a blurb for us, a write-up? And let us know how coaching has impacted you, how it's impacted the students. So if you're not familiar with a word cloud, this is a word cloud. And we took all the interviews that were conducted with the staff, um, the write-ups they gave us. And we put it into this word cloud. And the words that come, come up most frequently are in larger than the other ones. So as you can see, some things that, the threads and the patterns that we were seeing is that teachers and staff members, um, and I say staff members because we also work with instructional assistants um, sometimes. Um, so engagement, encouragement, support, safe ideas, teach, work, planning. Those were some common threads that we saw um, that teachers were saying. So I think Pam is going to pass Pam and Derek are going to pass out some of the actual write-ups and quotes that teachers and staff gave to us. Um, this is where this word cloud came from. So if you'll just take a couple minutes and um, just, just peruse it a little bit. And then we will open it up to questions. Yeah. And if, we're going to put it up here also. People would rather read it on the slide.
They're like instructional coaching trading cards. Feel free to swap them around, negotiate.
Also, one of the things we did with the quotes is we put, we put a label at the top to connect it back um, to what Corinne and Derek were talking about. Our focuses, you know, the PLCs and the coaching, or um, you might see one that says CEEX. So making the connection back to the previous um, information.
So does anybody have any questions that they would like to ask about the program or any of those specific things that we touched on that we have been involved in these last two years?
I have a quick question. So what's the method in reaching out to um, each one of the teachers? Or do you have, is this part of in-service? Or what is, how are you connecting with the teachers when you're meeting with them?
There's, I think that each of us have a little bit of a different strategy. Um, I can speak for last year at Phoenix Elementary, we had a, a lot of teachers within their first three years of teaching. And research states that three to five years is a really crucial time for teachers in terms of getting settled and burnout. And so I actually targeted them specifically to have those conversations and to find out how to support them. Um, some teachers have Some teachers have sought out, depending on what they've wanted and what their focus has been, or a PD situation that they wanted support in.
You mentioned in-service and we do during the first week of school with our principal, talk about the opportunity that's available with coaching. And then in the first few weeks of school, we, I think we all put a lot of effort into just being in classrooms. You know, we become another teacher, support person, kids know us, teachers get used to us being in the classroom and then and that initiates a lot of conversations that can lead into a coaching either cycle or just conversations.
It's really exciting to see you all here and thank you for sharing this wonderful information. I'm curious. Individuals are in situations that might be new to them because of their lack of exposure or experience, what are some of the methods, like what what resources or where do you go to get information to better support teachers? And I'm thinking specifically around the wonderful diversity that we have of families here. And how do we support teachers so they can really meet the needs of the students that they're serving? So that might be like, I'm just curious about that. And also, well, answer that question and then I have another one.
I think that because our focus is all parts of the child, right, that's the whole, the whole goal, and so all of those different initiatives that you saw, those all give us pathways into all of the different pieces of a kiddo, so the engagement and the data, our family engagement, that's been going on, we supported teachers a lot for that chunk because presenting data to families is a new experience for teachers, and so we had a lot of conversations around what that would look like. I think also too, it's that Art of Coaching book that you saw up there really focuses on what Elena Aguilar calls transformational coaching, and there's a lot of focus on relationship, emotional intelligence, questioning strategies, it's not, we're going to come in and we're going to fix whatever is happening or whatever you're doing, because it's not our classroom, right, it's their classroom, it's their kids, it's their families. And so our goal is to really be that mirror for them, to ask questions and reflect back, to bring them to a place where they come to do what they think is best for the kids in their room.
Also, we have really become kind of master listeners. And so in every conversation we're having, we are thinking of an point into conversation or coaching cycle, and so part of that listening is about this might be uncomfortable and this might get messy. And yet, we're going to go there gently and talk about things like equity and diversity. And some of those really that can be uncomfortable for people.
I think we also, I think all of us really approach it as lead learners and and we're in this with our teachers. The support we've had in the last two years for our own learning, the support with conferences and book studies, the time to meet together as coaches to support each other, help each other out, really leads that and being coached as well that we have, so I think the support and and really, we're all here as learners and improvement, and so that's how we approach it.
I appreciate the humility, right, I mean, this requires a lot of humility and I appreciate that gentleness that you mentioned. And I'm just curious when there is you know, as we're trying to support individuals, so they can better support individuals, I guess my, and I'm not sure if it was clear. How do we, what training do you have, I heard this wonderful book by Elena Aguilera? And but how do we do like cross-cultural education for individuals that are really there to support a family? I guess that's where my question is. And then what is the connection between the work that you're doing and the work that Kelly is leading through equity, diversity, and inclusion, like is there a pathway, like how are you supporting that space? And also, how do you, you mentioned teachers, but also staff, does that mean administration also has an opportunity to get this sort of support in service, because I think that's really beautiful?
You know, I think all of that, I hope I can answer this. I think, yes, we're very connected to the work that Kelly is doing and we're included and invited to to the Take It Up Training. I know I participated this year in a a OEA-sponsored Coaching Academy that is on, you know, where we did a book study of coaching for equity. So so again, it comes down, it's not just one book that we're reading, it's we're being coached. We're going to the conferences, we're participating in the workshops. And I think it's it's the work we're all doing, and I think we all do it together, we work very closely. The coaches and the principals meet and develop things, we've been meeting with the two-way merger, you know, we're working all together all the time.
Going to say, and we have our own coach, the coach of the coaches, Ellen Levy, who's worked with our district for almost a decade now, I think she has been a consultant for us, and so these are the kinds of conversations that we are having collectively. And like Corinne said, it's all, I mean, they had the, you know, the little blurbs up there, but it is all so interconnected all of the time, because we cannot separate who we are as humans from the work we do with tiny humans, right? And so, well, sorry Derek, yours aren't tiny. That's elementary talk, but it's so connected that it's it's enlayered that we're always having those conversations and we're always having that equity lens in front of us of in this situation, who is this impacting the most, right? Who needs the most support, whose voice needs to be elevated and helping support our teachers and that work for themselves as well?
That's super helpful, thank you.
Anybody else?
We passed our 10 minutes because we were told 10 minutes on the dot.
Oh, that's on them, okay.
I just, you know, it's, this work is such, first of all, thank you for the presentation and you could have taken more time than 10 minutes, but I appreciate the effort. This work is such human work and it's sometimes so hard to quantify. And I think sometimes people in our position are people, you know, it's like, well, what does the data say, you know, what do the numbers say? But I'm curious about that from a student student outcomes perspective. What indicators do you all look for in ways that the work that you're doing is helping lift student achievement for those who are supporting?
That's so funny, because we're like, I wonder what questions they're going to ask, I bet there's going to be one about data. And it's, it'll, you know what? We are eyeball deep in assessments right now, so isn't that a great question during the testing season to see what are those results? And I know part of that Plan Do Study Act cycle is a huge piece of that, because you are trying to quantify, you are trying to find the numbers and the data to see if you are having an impact, and if you're not, what are you going to do differently? The CEEX data also, just for myself personally, they have their own rating system and a teacher that I've been working with, who is a part of that group, I've been using that data collection tool to like multiple days a week during the same time of instruction for the same 20 minutes, go in, take the data, and that is fueling the conversation. Wow, look at this day, this engagement was super high, why? What did you do? Can you do it again? Right, like getting into those numbers to look and see, is it working or not?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you guys for giving us the time to show.
Thanks for everything you're doing.
Okay. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
Thank you, Don, seconded by Nancy, do we have any objections? Right now, consent agenda is approved. Next are action items. And the first is the Board Meeting Calendar for 2324.
Yeah, thank you, we had a discussion on this last time, I think all the all the requests made this final version, but I'd ask you to look it over again. Just so you know, one of the questions was about July 6th, but I think we decided to keep that on that day. There was a Wednesday in August due to the Summer Board Conference that weekend and people being on the road. And we added the March Board Work Session, which we have focused on student safety and behavior, which I think that's a good add.
I have a motion.
I move to approve the Board Calendar, Board Meeting Calendar for 2324 as presented.
I second that.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Nancy, any discussion? We will vote Rebecca.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Calendar, Board Meeting Calendar is approved. Next, we have item I2, Declaration of Surplus, surplus item.
If you're in the market for a 95 Chevy, it'll be on the auction, if you guys well-used Chevy, I would say. It'll be at auction if this is approved by the board tonight, when we can get it there, thanks, John.
All right. I feel like we should do the roll call with the auctioneers. Myself, we're not going to do that. The auctioneer at the at the thing was really good, yeah.
Although he tended toward the Eagle Point Ways, which is not a
I know, that was not like, you're not gaining.
The 80s, in the 80s, that was not a popular.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, we're getting, we're getting distracted, okay. Do I have a motion for this item?
I move to declare the 1995 Chevy G30 service truck as a surplus item as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nancy, thank you, Sarah, any discussion? Hearing none, Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes, so. Okay. I3, which is Board Policy GC-BDF GD-BDF.
I, yeah, I think we, thank you, auctioneer. I think we answered the questions last time, but we did choose an equivalent plan, American Fidelity, it actually helped our staff because it pushed off pulling that tax off from January to September, and and that was funds will go to American Fidelity and it'll be similar to the state plan. We feel like that provides better service to our staff members. And yeah, I'll entertain any questions, but that's why it's this shorter policy version too.
Great, do you have a motion?
I move to adopt policy GC-BDF slash GD-BDF, paid family medical leave insurance as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Rebecca, any further discussion?
Kudos for finding a program.
Yes.
Kudos.
Yes. Okay, Rebecca? Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is approved. Moving to information and discussion, we're going to talk about, we're going to have a student rep discussion and then we're going to go take a recess. So what do we want to talk about? Sarah, I'll bring it to you first.
So surprised. So I just it was about this time last year that we maybe just came and interviewed and came on the board and oh no, it happened in the fall, it happened in the fall, sorry. We've talked about doing it in the spring, but the spring is away from us, so you know, it'll be fall, but last, next board meeting will probably be the last one that you attend prior because graduation. And so just having an opportunity to hear feedback from you about what, how maybe we as a board could make the experience better, fuller, richer, you know, kind of get some feedback from you on on how we can make it better and what you thought of your experience, not to really, I guess I'm putting you on the spot. And then just hearing from Kalen too about, maybe from an admin level about the program as a whole, and we just, I guess, I'll we'd just like to continue to improve this program, so from those of you who have actually been participants with us, I'd like to hear, I think we all would, you know, your your thoughts on how it went and what we can do back.
I just have a clarifying question, Sarah. My hope, I mean, people feel free to share now, but I am a really huge proponent of anonymity and sometimes when people have to share difficult information, it's really hard. So I would also invite people to maybe do it in a in a different format, maybe where they're writing, maybe if they're having a conversation, depending what feels most comfortable, but if there was something that might not be going as well, it'd be really hard to be like, hey, this is, this part did not work really well. So I would just suggest that we do it that way.
Thank you, and I think we will have extra interview things for you next year, or at the end of the year too, I think, there'll be a written, there'll be a written, you know, there'll be a written thing too, because it's school, right?
Me and Peyton were actually just talking about this, we're like, oh, like, what are ways that like we could like share it to the board? And I was thinking that, not really, like, I think it's really cool that I've gotten to get this experience, I've been in the school district my entire life, and so having a voice and like being able to share it, it's been really cool. I was just thinking though, for like more of an inclusive way as like the high school, like I was thinking maybe there could be four positions on the board and each position is for a different grade level. So if it like, so like we're seniors and then the junior, and so we mostly talk about the seniors. And then Brianna will talk about the juniors and sometimes other stuff, but I just think it would be really cool if there was a voice for each grade level, because we all have different things that are going on, and I think that that would be really great, but that's all I had to say.
Yeah, basically just everything we kind of said, because there's so many kids that have different experiences from different grade levels, like I'm just a sports kid, so I really only know about sports, but you know, get some other more like different experiences and different ways that other kids see the schools, I think would be a better, be a good idea. That's basically all I got to.
And like adding on, I feel like it would be cool if like the staff from the high school, like not elected, but like kind of made a recommendation for like a student that they would think that would be like a really good person, they'd come on the board and talk. Because I feel like if it's just open to, like, it should be open to everyone, because everyone like needs an opportunity, but I feel like if staff were on like the lookout for someone, that would be good to like speak on the board, I think that that would be really a nice opportunity too.
I echo, there we go, what the both the girls said, I also wonder about our alternative programs, and you know, we have a compass program and a virtual academy component that I think there's a healthy amount of students in both of those programs and I'm interested to kind of hear their perspective as well, I think our reps have done a great job of talking about things, even though Peyton says she's only a sports kid, she talks about other things too. But just kind of to get that unique perspective, so I would be interested to how we could diversify. Um, but just kind of to get that unique perspective. So I would be interested to how we could diversify, um, who participates. And I also think just for my own learning, I would like to meet with the reps, um, you know, before we come here because we did often, you know, talk about the same things and also just to make sure we can be more intentional about getting the whole school's voice. You know, I, I'm very like etched in my own lane, but it would be really great for us to be more intentional about, oh, we should go find a student who's in Magic Training Club and ask them what's going on there because that's not what the five of us are doing. And so that's something I don't think necessarily you all need that we could do better in practice, um, just back at our high school, so.
One of the things I'd love for you guys to think about, um, and I don't want to, if you have something to share on this now, great. I think something the board is hungry for that we've seen other districts throughout the state. Not many, but some have been really, have had cool examples of students influencing policy changes within the, the school district. And, um, I think sometimes it's hard from where we sit to, to solve that problem and figure out how, how, how students can be involved in policy, um, a little bit more. So, um, something maybe for the two of you, um, to think about as you prepare for whatever exit conversation this is, but, um, you know, like, it's great to show up and share what's going on in the school and what events are happening, but you know, you all are living this experience. You see firsthand what's going well in your experience as students and what's not and what, you know, policy decisions driven by a bunch of old people, um, are impacting your lives, right? And so, um, I put myself in that category now. Um, I know everyone's, oh, okay. But seriously, and I, so, and does that mean you could affect every single policy? No, but if there's something, you know, that the student body as a whole can really get behind, um, that's important to you. I think that would be a really meaningful use of this whole endeavor. Um, so something to think about. If you have something to share on that now, feel free, but otherwise I just ask you to think about it. I think Ms. Cross had something to share too on that front.
As you say that, I was just kind of thinking about it. And like when we talk about like the positives that are happening at the school, like, I feel like we could also give like an opportunity to say like things that aren't going so well, but like that we could improve on. Like, it's not really like saying like anything bad or anything, just like kind of expressing like, oh, well, I kind of noticed this, that's been happening and that's been a little, a little rough, but we can definitely improve on it. And I think that that would be a really nice touch to do.
I have two things I wanted to kind of mention here. One thing is that, um, with our leadership team at the school, we've been talking about, just learning opportunities for them to get in the same room as other students who are in leadership roles across the state. And, um, the Oregon activities of school councils has great opportunities for that. And so we're looking into that. I would like to, um, talk with you all about the opportunity to send our board reps to that same, um, learning opportunity that happens each fall. Um, that is where there's a lot of conversation across the state and where students are being able to amplify their voices in order for policies to change. And I think, um, even just being exposed to those things is really inspirational. And it also, um, young people are so great at connecting. Um, they start to form relationships with other students in schools across the state and we, you know, gain a lot of traction in that. So I'd like to explore that in the future. And I think, um, that would be a great opportunity. And the other thing is I noticed that, um, this group has talked a lot about school spirit and had actually named that as something that they would like to work on and kind of monitor throughout the school year. And I think they did that in an informal sense. Um, but I wonder if there's a way that we could kind of formalize some goals for the students. And also, um, we've talked about in, in the past, there was an advisory committee, um, where each advisor or advisory group had students participate monthly in a conversation. And I'm wondering how we can also, um, bring that back, which I have some plans for, but also involve our student reps in that. So it's kind of a well-rounded opportunity. Sorry, that was a lot of words.
I, I love the conference idea and, and, and also like, I'm sure this was the best experience of your senior year, but anything we can do to find things that are beneficial to you as students as part of this experience, you know, rather than just getting to spend time with us every other Thursday, which I know is so wonderful and, and something nice for your college resume, right? But also, yeah, something really truly meaningful in connecting with other students like you and, and seriously having, uh, a bigger voice. I mean, we're all here in service of you guys, you know, and, um, I, I would like this to continue to elevate and, and be a force for positive change for students and community. So love that idea. And I think this board, I could probably speak for everyone, say we would support that a hundred percent. So, yeah.
My only question was when the, we need to be very cautious on when this, um, conference is so that if it's fall, we usually pick in the fall. So, um, if you can, I don't know, I don't expect you to know the answer off the top of your head, but if you can help us stay focused so we can get that in motion would be amazing.
Yeah, I can do that. No problem. Um, the other thing too is as long as the people are selected and know that they're going, there isn't really any pre-work that needs to be done by our student reps in order to attend. So, um, I will get those dates to you nowish.
I, I think it's a, I think it's typically the first of November. So, um, it, and so that gives us time, we, we do that, but if we, sometimes we've selected them that second October meeting and then it would be two weeks later. So, um, that might be a timing issue that so, um, I think that's the one you're talking about. And yeah.
Think maybe giving staff heads up. I love what you said about having them make recommendations. Not that necessarily that person has to do it, but maybe that could happen before the end of the year, you know, just a sweet note to the, to the staff saying, hey, do you have someone, just like the way you do student of the month, um, to, to let them know that we're on the lookout for those folks to get them thinking about it.
I'd also be interested in hearing who as current student reps, who you might have noticed in the student body, who could be. No, no. Oh, I apologize. No, no, I apologize.
That could be part of the exit process, too.
But if we're asking staff, and since you've lived this experience, um, kind of, you know, looking out to see.
Just a thought on the, on the one from each grade, um, idea. One of the things that we thought about, you all are so busy, um, and perhaps if we could do that, we could rotate and or alternate. So, you know, like maybe ninth and eleventh one week and then tenth and twelfth another. And maybe so the, you know, the time commitment wasn't so. Uh, I don't know if it was overwhelming, but I, you know, I know that Peyton, you were rushing here after, you know, softball games with your eye blacks still on and, you know, um, so. Uh, but yeah, I don't know. Just a thought I had on that. I kind of liked that idea. Um, and we had really impressive kids from all grades who applied for these positions. So, um, yeah, could be really good.
We did. And just to take a little bit probably of a flip side of that, um, I think the freshman year really kind of setting, getting them set for success in the freshman year, um, was really a focus to maybe look at, uh, looking at like a tenth, eleventh, twelfth type of eligibility, just to help set the tone, because there is kind of, I think, a protective uh, bubble a little bit around the freshman class to help them, um, just navigate, understand navigating through, um, the high school experience. So, um, just as a flip side of, you know, something else to think about is that conversation.
Um, actually in link crew, we were talking about freshmen and like their voice and everything. And we actually were talking about like having a student rep, like for a link crew. And so if like, we didn't have a freshman like on the board specifically, like wonder if they could report to someone else and then they could say it. It's like, if you didn't want that, or like, I don't know, if you didn't want them on there. Because we were just thinking already about that. Anyway, and I was like, oh, wait, we were already talking about that.
I think what I'm really hearing from, from you and from you, Ms. Cross is a little more structured way to get feedback from more students from diverse experiences and backgrounds, however that can happen, would be beneficial. So, yeah. Good. Yeah, please.
Because I was like also thinking that, because like, we're kind of all like in the same group, you know, leadership, link crew. Like we don't really have anyone that's like in band or, yeah, or art or just like anything like that. So I feel like if we're just like the staff or even like us, student reps, just like looking out for different types of people, like even they, they don't have to have the best grades or like anything like that. It's just more about them wanting to like speak up about like Phoenix and they have a passion for it.
What if we did something where we could get information from like advisories so that every kid was able to like share their voice? And then we could look at trends or something like that?
Like how you were saying, like how we used to meet an advisory. I totally forgot about that. Like I remember in freshman, freshman year, we had whole well in art, we're actually in the same advisory. So, yeah, so I think that's actually a really cool idea and I think that we should bring that back.
Anything more? Well, uh, thank you, first of all, for, um, serving in this capacity all year. And, um, congratulations on all your collective accomplishments. Um, I know that you will continue to, um, represent our community, um, and make us proud in whatever you choose to do going forward. And, um, I also hope, being that both of you are seniors, that, um, you're able to really soak in these last couple of weeks. It's gonna go fast and there's gonna be a lot coming at you, but you know, if every once in a while, you could sort of just take a minute and take a breath and just, um, appreciate what's happening, even though it's gonna be coming at you so fast and furious. These times are gonna go really quickly and you're gonna look back on them fondly, um, and, uh, but not always remember everything. So, uh, that's coming from an old guy, right? So, uh, yeah. Congratulations and I'm looking forward to seeing you at graduation. We're gonna take a recess. How long do you, you all got really mad at me when I said nine minutes last time. So how long of a recess do you want to take? Ten minutes? Okay. So it was just that it wasn't a round number? Okay. We'll be back here at seven seventeen then. Yeah. Okay, we are back and the next item on the agenda is facilities and bond update. And, uh, thank you, John, for your patience.
Uh, good evening Chairman Campbell and School Board. Um, as always for everybody, this is an exciting time of the year. And, uh, in facilities, very much so, prepping for the summer and helping, um, as much as we can with the facilities and graduations and stuff. Um, earlier this week, I attended the Saferoots to Schools debrief. Uh, talent had got, I think most of you know, talent had gotten a grant to do a study, uh, to uh, highlight areas that, uh, talent could improve, uh, either through the school district or actually through the city and ODOT, um, road improvements and things. Anyhow, they identified a couple of things for the school district, um, some of them very simple and some of them I'm working on coming up with solutions and should have, have some solutions in, in the coming months. And I'll keep you, uh, posted, of course. Um, we had our first meeting for the design of the Culver complex last night. Um, we had a good turnout, not all of the, um, I call them special interest groups or whatever, were able to attend, but most sent emails and let us know their concerns and things like that. I will be giving a briefing on June first, um, with the findings, the things they learned yesterday of, from that meeting. And, uh, I just need to give them a little time to compile that. And finally, because this is short and sweet and we all need to celebrate a little bit. As of four P M. today, Oregon Department of Energy notified us that we have been awarded the Community Renewable Energy Program Grant for one million dollars to add solar and battery backup to Talent Middle School. And that is my briefing, um, open to any questions.
Quite a mic drop, John. Any questions?
Yesterday at the, um, Culver Facility Property Meeting, you had mentioned that you had a meeting with the City of Talent that morning.
Yes.
Um, have they talked about the buffer? Or what buffer is going to be expected as we look to how much we'd like to put on that property?
Yeah, they, the, yes, we did. We did speak about it. This, the, uh, how can I say this? What Jordan's approach was that she would rather see, rather than changing code to increase the buffer, she would rather see barriers put up uh, that would help that buffer. Uh, one of the things that was mentioned was trees, uh, between the orchard and, and the backside of that property. And, um, as you saw in the meeting yesterday, there are trees all along that. Um, one of the ideas that I brought up, since there is so many, are so many grants for solar, um, the possibility of doing ground mounted solar in that buffer, which would also create a physical barrier. And they love that idea. So we don't have any definitive answers yet, but those are the solutions. Um, they were not pushing to increase the buffer. They were looking for, uh, ways to work with us is, is what they expressed, um, because they knew that we have good intentions. And, um, I think we can work together to find, uh, some really good solutions for the district and for the community.
Fantastic.
I have a quick question. And maybe this is my question for you, John, but, um, what happens if the, like the city manager changes? There's a different city manager for some reason. How does that affect us?
Oh, well, of course we'll do our best to forge a good relationship. Um, of, of course, any personnel change can present problems, but, uh, I actually feel very confident that the team we have working on the annexation and, um, and the team with the district with, uh, with Brent and stuff, I, I have a good feeling that whatever happens, uh, we'll get through this. And, um, one thing going for us is that I made it very well known that S R three would run out in September of twenty-four and we lose the opportunity to do a large portion of any project if they delay us. And they appreciated that and they actually made notes so that they could share that with, uh, with their, uh, board or council.
And when we, we've been discussing this week about the annexation and really getting the criteria that's actually criteria now that can't be changed in the future, because we know this will be a multi-year phase project that it'll be the rules that is apparent when we get annexed.
That was, that was what I was asking.
Okay.
I also wanted just to mention, oh, go ahead. One of the just timing piece of it is, uh, Z C S is really gathering a ton of information and they're continuing to gather information um, about the needs and desires, similar to how we did the high school. But June first, uh, John will be presenting just kind of a rough sketch draft of kind of the direction. And then what they will be doing is meeting with individual groups to And then what they will be doing is meeting with individual groups to see, did we get this right? Would we miss those types of things? And really plotting out a master plan for that. When we looked at the board schedule, um. That retreat uh may need to have some work session type uh. Attached to it because Z C S I think wants to come in uh July to kind of share more of a master plan. Um, and the the direction and it won't necessarily need. Board approval until probably late August or or probably first of September. That's just kind of the timing in the process.
Overall timeline, we're hoping to have an approved. Master plan by September. And then narrow down the projects, uh, one, what whatever projects or work that we think we can get done over the summer of twenty twenty four. Um. And then they can begin design. Uh, to hopefully go out to bed in December or January so that we could meet that. That timeline.
Very good. Any other questions?
I apparently have no questions. I have two questions. Um. Have we had any feedback during the process? The last process, there was a lot of, there were some community groups that were concerned. Have we had any feedback with these community groups? Is my first question.
Are you talking to neighbors or?
The people that were concerned about having the buffer in the first place.
Oh.
There were some people on the planning commission and then there was a group. I I forgot the name of the group's name. Um, but they were very concerned about the buffer and children playing. On in that area. And so I was wondering if they had reached out to us and we've had conversations with them or if they. I don't know. That's just.
We, I could answer this. We are waiting or we are working really hard to alleviate their concerns. We've got a phase one. Environmental study that's happening right now. Um, I expect in the next uh two to three weeks tops, we'll have results from that. And based on the feedback that I got. Um, from Alpine Environmental, the company that's doing it, um, we will probably. Press on to a phase two, which will include soil testing. Uh, just based on the past usages. Um, so we haven't. Um, addressed it with those people yet. We're trying to find out more details so that we can be um. Educated and knowledgeable about what we are actually working with.
Thank you very much. I think the data will speak for itself. There's a lot of speculation and not a lot of um like. Data. And so I think that is, thank you so much for doing it. Database did not just what we think or what we, so I appreciate that. My second question may be kind of random, but. When with my experience on the bond and the pre-bond and the long term, um. Whatever that was called, uh. When we had these community groups, everybody has a wish list a mile long and I've kind of heard. I've heard pieces from here and there, you know, I've heard Little League and O D P and and um. There's only, I mean, it seems like it's a lot of property, but when you. When you look at it, it might not be a lot of property. So how how is it? Do we decide? Um, is there? Like a. Is that up to the board? I mean, I guess how do we decide what are the importance and who gets what and and what is needed because I. When I was on the committee, there was people that came up and it was like, I want this and they thought they could just get it because they were at. The pre-bond meeting and I'm like, no, no, the board has to vote on that. And they're like, really? I just thought I could come here and say I wanted two acres and get it. So um. So yeah, as easy as that. So my point, I guess my question is, do we have like? Is that gonna be a problem? Do we have a like a platform on what it's important and? And the different stages? I mean, who's gonna decide? All of that.
I know you were part of the high school design process where we met with all the different individual groups. We asked them their hopes, their dreams. Uh, what they would like to see. Um, and this process is gonna be no different. Um, that's what we did last night. We every group, uh, every um representing. All of the different interest groups, uh, they all got to voice their opinion and that's some of the data or or I guess their their ultimate goals. Or what they would really like to see. Um, I'll present some of that data to you, I think, next meeting on June first. Um, but then we made it very clear at the beginning. It's everybody's hoping for the sky. And some things aren't going to be able to happen and there will be compromises from. Most part, just you know, most parties uh to come up with the most comprehensive plan that serves the district. Uh, next year, ten years, twenty years, thirty years down the road, but not just the district that serves the district and the community. So. We've been very upfront with everyone, even uh in January, Brent and I met with uh many of those groups that were the whole. Uh, all of the groups met and we made it very clear then that, you know. We want all of your ideas um so that we can try to put together the best master plan that serves the district and the community. But not everybody's gonna get everything they want. Um, and you're totally right about it not being a large enough property because some of the dreams are really huge. So um it it'll get whittled down. Um, I'm sure that. Some of it is gonna be based on. How the benefits to the district and the community in the long run. And um. I'm sure that um we will keep you informed and and uh be asking. Uh, your feedback along the way, um, as well as all of the special interest groups.
Thank you. I just, I know when we did the bill, the. The reason I figured it was more a property because that was the school. I mean, they wanted a, I don't know what it would have been. Like five times bigger than what it actually is. Um. I guess my only concern is thank you for being honest with everyone is that. Oh, some of these are community partners that we really value. However. Just because we really value them, it make, you know, I don't want them to get upset like, hey, we've been partnering with you for twenty some odd years and really. You know, saved you, saved you on this piece and come on, it's time to pay back. So I just want to be very careful with that. I don't want to. Wreck any relationships and so, but I also want everyone to get, I'm one of those people pleasers that want everyone to get what they want. So. Um, yeah.
I think some things that came up even yesterday is also when we start putting things on this. Uh, laying things out. Um, I think Sarah, you brought up leveraging other areas in town or other district. Or other things, for example, tennis courts came up and there's, you know, can we partner with the city where tennis courts are already and have? You know, a four or. Place where we could host our girls tennis team, which is growing and growing. So uh, all of those kind of conversations that come up. Uh, ultimately, the board will approve the master plan and it will ease down to. You know what the priorities are from from the groups and have community events just like we did. Um. But uh, I I guess I kind of feel like that. Going through the process at the high school, I was scared to death. And I think we got a pretty good product out of that. I'm, I trust these guys that that can really kind of tease things down and. And 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 really hear what the community wants and the district wants. So. Um, but I echo what you're thinking and want to make sure we have our partners to um. Be able to to take part of it where they can, where they can.
Okay, very good work happening. Thank you, John, and uh very exciting about the solar thing too. It's exciting to hear about. And battery backup because that's an important, I've learned some things about solar and. It's not just good enough to have credits back to the grid or whatever. The battery backup is where the magic happens because that that's what really protects you. And in in the event of a outage or catastrophe, John's really familiar with this after the Alameda fire. They've had the entire neighborhood, their house for days, so. Uh, um, yeah, go ahead. Did you have some?
I I was just gonna say, um, just for point of reference, the. The size of the project that this million dollar grant will pay for uh should offset our power bills by about nine thousand dollars a year. And provide up to a little over five hundred hours of battery backup should we lose power.
Very cool. Good stuff. Thank you, John. Next is uh financial update, right?
Yeah, just a couple of things. You have a resolution that will be uh asking for approval to. Um, move some funds just to out, make sure we're allocated in the uh correct areas and have enough funding for. Uh, end of the year wrap up. This is sometimes just a precautionary measure um based on uh. Purchasing at the end of the year. One of the other ones where it says change in requirements and fund modifications, that was a audit recommendation. To uh, we were running a negative balance with S B eleven forty nine and we just reimbursed the bond and so really kind of combining those funds. So we're not showing a a negative balance. So that's what that means. Uh, and then we'll share that for next time for approval. The other financial is just a revenue forecast that came out that we were just talking about. Um, very favorable uh for our state. Huge increases in expected revenue. Um, and it, I think it's important to. Share with our legislature. You probably got a O S B A email about some numbers and just uh to explain those numbers. We're in an interesting situation because. Um, we have A D M security and so um that has. That has really benefited us and you saw at the budget meeting and those numbers and what our ending fund balance would be. If we didn't have that, it would be major cuts. Currently and the next biennium. So um. I shared an email I sent to the representatives and the um. The senators, just more on a personal, just this is a great opportunity to increase that to ten three, which we've been advocating for. So we'll see.
You have an update on the on the A D M security and whether that's something they're gonna be able to address this session?
Yes, so um that and thanks to Pam Marsh and Morgan Allen and uh some people that were really talking to the powers to be up there. Um, I will, I will get final updates, but they were really looking at those numbers. Um, Saniam Canyon were uh had some reporting issues based on their uh virtual school. And so they fixed that. It ended up being about a one point, I think it was six million dollar uh shortfall. And and they've made that ask and I'm not sure if it's completely been approved yet, but it's, it'll be coming from the S I A. Fund that's kind of secured for emergencies. So, but it's, it looks good. I don't think we have to do anything on that.
Any other questions? Financials? Okay, uh, community recovery update. Do you have anything?
The only thing I have is, and I think we, did we skip the legislative?
We'll go back to that. Do you want me to go back to that now?
Uh, I could just real quick, we do have a long-term recovery group uh coming for the community recovery update. There is also a big. Grant opportunity that they just released today or yesterday, maybe. Um, so we'll be looking forward to hearing what that means. And schools are a part of that. Uh, so we'll look at um being able to apply for more funding. So. John's really good at spending funds, but he's been pretty darn good at getting funds too. So. That's all I had.
Said that for John's benefit. Um, okay, great. Uh, anything else on legislative? Sorry.
There's not a lot because a lot of the hearings are going to an end and they are going to. Being decided in committee. Um, eight nineteen was a very controversial one. I'm not sure what's going to happen to that one. They've changed it a few times. I think, is that the one they changed on the day they were voting or something? So. Um, sounds like Brett can remember better than me.
Yeah, there are a number of amendments to that. It's by um. We have, and there's a lot of political pressure on that. I think that's gonna pass. We're trying to, you know, limit the impact on what that means. For schools, but um it's gonna really change the way we do business um. With special ed and abbreviated days. We don't have that issue. We have our uh, we have one student that we partner with the E S D that we're already working on lengthening that day.
And then um. And forty-five that it, it was on hearing. So if you want to. Do a written testimony on ten forty-five, they finally put out dash five. Um, I was kind of, I'll just say it, I was kind of annoyed that it took so long to put out a dash five. Um, I know many groups were working on it, but it seemed to me like, come on. Uh, you know, you put it out right before we're supposed to testify and it's not a short document. So. Um, I haven't really had a chance to read it, but I, it sounds like a lot of the concerns I had were were gone. I just. Putting more restrictions on school districts and school board members makes me really nervous. Um, when the state does that again, like as Rebecca said, what happens if someone else replaces someone else? Um, then what? So that makes me really nervous as well. And I think it makes them nervous because that happens at school boards as well. So I think there's that trust issue of. Of that, um. I don't know if I'm remember, if I'm forgetting anything else or not. Yeah, I don't know if you guys know about the S E I filing or not, but um some school districts, some boards. Um, quit and then now have been reappointed by their E S D and that was the plan all along. Is that they had planned, they didn't want to file the S I E. Um, and so they had talked to their um. E S D and said, if I resign, will you reappoint me? And the whole boards resigned and so then they had, they had. Business they had to do. So then the E S D then appointed the whole board back. The legislation is saying. That's not a loophole. You still have to. Because they were no, they were not board members on April fifteenth. They resigned on April fourteenth and then got reappointed on like April twentieth. And so that was, that's being discussed on. If they're gonna be fined or not. And there's also legislation that may change it, or if you're in a school district. Of a smaller school district, yeah, then you can, then it wouldn't be applied. So there's a lot of that. You know, oh, those school board members were finding the loop again. So I don't know. I don't know what's gonna happen. Um, it's kind of a unique situation. The thing is, I think everybody knew that was gonna happen. It wasn't like a surprise. At least I knew it was gonna happen. So I'm assuming others did too.
And I don't. Yes.
Quitting, the quitting part.
Oh, the quit, oh.
Like, I knew that, that I knew which board we're gonna be quitting. They.
That's, I think is, that's gotta be some misunderstanding about the S E I filing itself because. It's not, it doesn't ask you specifics about your income. I mean, I. And is it so bad in the public's interest to make sure there's not? Direct conflict of interests happening? I just don't understand what the problem is.
Seems really weird and kind of shifty that they would do that.
Uh, yeah.
Really transparent at all.
I don't have a problem with the transparency. I don't know.
I guess it was, it had to do with like a s- in the small towns. Um, there might be one like. Trying to think of a small town that. Where's the one that's Emily's in? Yeah, so there's one. Um. Hardware store in like fifty miles, right? And that, if that, if that hardware store owner. Works on this, is on the school board, then is it a conflict every time the school goes to that hardware store? To purchase things and now it's a public record because the school is not gonna want to go seventy-five miles to the hardware store. But the hardware person isn't telling the school they have to go there. So there's different things like that where there's. Not any options. I mean, that was one example, but if you can think of different maintenance and all of that kind of stuff. It, it's a small town. There's only what, you know? Thousand people, most of the people that are volunteering are business people who own a business in the town and. Where does that conflict go and where does it not? That was the discussion of it, which I can kind of see where it makes sense. where does that conflict go and where does it not? That was the discussion of it, which I can kind of see where it makes sense. However, the loophole, I, I, yeah. Everybody knows that who owns the hardware store town anyway. So why does it matter if it's on the state record or not?
Yeah. Okay. Something to keep us entertained, I guess. Okay, um, we'll skip because I'm all over the place tonight. Um, we'll skip to J seven, which is coming up, um, for consideration. Um, and that's, uh, J F C F A R.
Yeah, mainly just the red language, um, are the adjustments. Timelines and when decisions need to be made and before.
Okay.
We'll bring Blapp back next time.
Any questions on that A R that's coming up next meeting? Next is S R O contracts, P H S and P M S.
I'll entertain any questions, but this is, um, similar to some of the S R O contracts. We are looking at expanding talent to, uh, full five days a week. Um, which will help serve the middle school and the elementary. The contract for the city of Phoenix is, is very similar. Uh, we heard it to say schools meeting that when they annex, uh, some more property in, I can't remember what that zone is. But when they get that zoned, uh, to bring into the city of Phoenix, they will be adding more officers in that. Uh, because it'll be another tax-based revenue for them. And, um, they're really interested in to see how we want to expand the S R O program and chief's, uh, broker, we have spoke about maybe a half S R O and a half officer to really feed, uh, Phoenix Elementary and, and even utilize for Orchard Hill as well, even though that's a Medford school. Uh, I know Officer Hall goes over there for support and training and things of that nature. So. Again, I, I think we should never take advantage or, uh, take it for granted that our municipalities and our school board are in agreement with S R Os. Um, because we know there's some state potential legislature that may, uh, feel differently sometimes, but, um, we're really making sure we want to make that to local decision and we have a great partnership with them. So, and I appreciate the city of talent uh, expanding that, um, opportunity for us.
Great. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, I'm not sure how these get drafted. And I know that in the work session, we had conversations around what might be really I have some suggestions that I think that would be really beneficial. Thank you. I had some suggestions on what would be really beneficial for, um, for the S R Os. And I do agree with you. Brent, around what you previously mentioned. I didn't see anything here around additional training, like mental health training, cross-cultural training and that sort of thing. And I was curious, well, I would request that that gets added. I mean, there's other things here that are added that I'm like, I'm not sure what necessarily gets added to this draft or what doesn't.
Yeah, we can work with our partners on that and say, this is the desire of the board. If you have some suggestions, you can email them to Denise and we can we can, um, see how they're, they're, those are going to, have those gone to the council yet?
Okay.
Yeah. Well, email suggestions and we'll work with our cities and see how we can get some, something we did. There is, uh, uh, they're also, they do training for their whole staff and onboarding for that. So we can, we can, you know, making sure that's happening and then we can look at putting in the contract if the board wants to.
Would it be helpful to have an idea of training they do receive? I mean, that's good question. And they might be receiving training on.
Right.
You know.
Like I know that there's some local training. There's like assist training, right? When someone is I hope is that, that doesn't ever happen at the school, but we know that it has happened in neighboring schools. Um, which is again, mental health training, um, just other things, especially being a school environment, or maybe the, the approach isn't just like extreme. Maybe that's not the right word. Um, but where the approach isn't necessarily just like law enforcement, you know, what are the other things that can mitigate? And S minim or, um, yeah, minimize that escalation of issues. Cause sometimes, oftentimes it's just kids, kids, kiddos going through challenging times. I love what Kaven brought up earlier that after last week or whenever it was that teachers were really thoughtful and intentional and being kind and caring and taking care of people's emotional wellbeing after that lockdown that happened. So I'm just thinking of things like that where we can maybe lessen the events or not maximize issues that maybe some things could be mitigated and reduced in a, in a way that's more appropriate rather than just more.
Yeah. I know exactly what you're saying. And, um, I think one thing I, I've mentioned, we, we make sure their contract starts during our in-service week and they participate in our um, trainings that we have. And so, uh, not just when students are present, that's a, that's a big time to connect with staff and, and receive some of the training that other staff are getting. Um, and then whatever they're providing for their, for their officers as well. So.
I don't know how much you're aware or participated in, um, O D E has been conducting a study on us and two other school districts or one other school district in the state that, um, has, have robust S R O programs. And, um, were you there? Who was there at the meeting? Was that just me? Or Rick was there? Yeah, Rick, Rick was there with, and we had administrators and they came back down and shared some initial results with us. And then I think they're planning on releasing the final results in the fall. Is that right?
Yeah, it's a final report. They did, um, they spoke to student staff. I actually didn't know it was supposed to be a secret that we're a part of that research project, but, uh, it, but it's, but I, we've been talking about it all year. So, but all of a sudden, last meeting, they said, yeah, we want to make sure that we keep the districts, uh, that they can't be identified because, you know, anyway. Uh, but they have some great feedback and we learned a lot. They wanted to get a sense of if they captured what we, um, captured kind of the sense of our S R O program. And if we, they missed anything. And they had some suggestions in there and some of that was some, uh, cross-cultural training and, um, uh, there's going to be a full report coming out for, um, S R O programs throughout the state in August. So.
Yeah. So I think Nancy, I was impressed by not only, I think O D E had some good questions a- along the vein that you're asking. And how do your officers support, you know, um, cross, uh, cultural and, you know, those kinds of things. And how do we come at it from a supportive community mindset rather than just a law enforcement mindset? And I was struck by the feedback to that effect was very positive, uh, that, you know, people, um, I mean, it was kind of co-mingled with the other district, but, um, uh, there was really positive feedback to that effect. So I, I think we'll get some good, I'm, I'm looking forward to the results of that um, study because we'll not only get uh, some good feedback, we'll get some good suggestions, I think, on how we can continue that work. So. Great. Well, I, I support, um, I'm excited that this is being expanded. I still, as someone with a kid in our Medford school, um, I still feel like there's can be some strengthening there, um, with the, with Medford police and, uh, it would be great if we could explore maybe a more formal. I don't know what that relationship looks like, but that's something that seems like it has an opportunity for us. Um, but on the whole, I'm excited to see this expand.
And I'm also open to anybody else that might have some language. As I was not very, I was not clear and I'm struggling to articulate what I want to say. You know, looking at some of the data that we had looked at one, another work session, right? That there's how bias comes into play. How we want to really be able to de-escalate situations and not just contribute to this. And I know this sounds extreme, but this prison to, sorry, school to prison pipeline, right? How do we, how do we build strong relationships within our school districts? Because we want those to be reinforced. So when these kiddos become adults, they have healthy relationships, um, and attitudes towards police officers. And I think that we have a really good opportunity for us to be able to do that. Starting here since those, we're starting to build those relationships. Unfortunately, we sometimes, not all the kids have that same opportunity to build those healthy connections. And I just want to make sure that that is part of the conversation. Especially since we have an opportunity to, to really, um, integrate, um, the judicial or the, yeah, police systems into our schools. So I just want to mitigate risk and not minimize escalation of situations that could possibly be better taken care of.
Yeah. And I, I got the sense, um, and, and one of the things I pointed out in this meeting is it would be great to have some more data on how, um, students and families from varying backgrounds feel about their experience with this program. Um, I really got the sense that our, our S R Os and their bosses at the city, the, the chiefs are very in tune with what you're talking about and very aware of that. And, and I, that's definitely a shared goal. Um, is, is my sense. Um, and so, and I think they made that really clear. So. It's a shared goal. Does it mean that we're there yet? I don't think so, but it's, it's a good call out Nancy because these are the times when we're doing drafting formal agreements where you can codify those wishes into a, or, you know, formal setting.
And it provides accountability, right? Cause I, I think, I don't think people intentionally go, we just want things to go sideways. But unless there are those accountability pieces, we can go there, right? And I think that that's part of I mean, that's kind of the role of a board. We know we have really good intentions, but sometimes those intentions create different impacts. And I just want us to support, um, our S R Os while also support families and how do we support each other, right? How do we contractually know the rules of the game so we can all engage in a way that feels most comfortable for all of us?
Anything else?
I have a list of things, um, sorry. And my computer died, so I took pictures real quick. So I would have them on my phone. It's out of my list. Um, so to piggyback on, on Nancy's kind of thing of, of the, I was kind of surprised and I couldn't, that the S R O training wasn't, I know the S R Os go to it, but it's not in their contract. And I was kind of surprised because that is particular to student um, issues and how to support students and that kind of thing. I think a lot of the things maybe I'm hoping the things that Nancy was talking about would be covered in a S R O meeting. Or to have, I know I went, so I talked about it when I went to pace that S R O. And you, even if it doesn't come up, you have connections on how to this come. And so I was kind of shocked that the S R O was not, that was not a training that was, that was included in there. Another thing is I'm glad they come during, um, in-service however, and I'm glad that they get the trainings as the teachers, but I feel like um, especially after Kaylin talked, there, there needs to, the S R Os maybe to do some trainings during the, um, in-service time as well. Maybe, maybe there are some trainings that the S R Os could help facilitate. I know there's a lot of of, you know, what to do of safety issues and what to do in these certain situations. And we had a great conversation with the coaching, coaching and it might have, there might be questions that teachers have on safety or there's things that come up. And I think in-service and having some kind of like session that the police officers kind of help answer questions or go through different drills or different ways that we can improve things and have some openness. I know I've heard of some people having concerns about this or that, but sometimes there's not time to talk about it. So I'm wondering if we could do and do like a safety thing. Um, I don't know if that all makes sense. Nancy's understanding what I'm saying. So that's good.
Yeah. And, um, and you might have some others too, but I just want to, you're, you're right. And I think we need to remember that we don't necessarily need to put everything in the contract that we, we are doing. And when Officer Hall really oversees that program, we can say, you know, these are our priorities that we want to be seeing. So, um, you know, there's some certain, you know, agreements that we want to get into the contract, but just to, just because it doesn't live here, doesn't mean that that's not a priority or important.
Brent, thank you so much for saying that. And I think at the beginning, oh, thank you for saying that. And at the beginning, that's where I was like, I'm not really sure how much this has. But then I saw some other things like they must always wear a badge. They must participate in classroom discussions. And I'm like, oh, well, if that's on the contract, then these other things that have more weight should definitely be on the contract. And again, I don't know what the right balance, of course, we want to strike that right balance, but yeah, just more for clarity.
The only other things, well, one, I wish we could, I know we can't put it in the contract. The officer hole can never be taken away from the school. If I had that, I would put that on there. Um, I know, I want to take that part out. Um, there was, oh, I know they go to the elementary school and thank you for saying that we don't have to have. Just because it's not in the contract, doesn't mean they can't go to the elementary school. So I'll skip to that one. And the last one I have um, was more of a technical question and I can't really look it up on my computer. But, um, on article four, if the, in the talent section, it talked about forty hours, um, in, in the previous section. And then in article four, it only did thirty. So I just wanted to maybe look and make sure that we did not, we correct all the right spots.
Perfect. We'll get that changed. Thank you.
And I can send you an email Denise, if you would like.
That was really nice of Polly to bring you her computer. I could have done that right next to you. Just trying to get it through this week, everybody. Okay. Good questions. Okay. So that will be up for vote uh, on June first. Speaking of June first, the next agenda is there for your review. That will be a biggie because we'll have our public hearing for the budget and, uh, all the budget red resolutions will be on the agenda. Um, as well as these, um, S R O contracts and we'll have a program report with the long-term recovery group. So I'm excited for that. So any questions or concerns about the agenda, please direct them to uh, Denise. No, I'm just kidding. You can, you can direct them to me. And we are adjourned.
Michael, I just want to say I really appreciate your humor today. I needed it. And I think that sometimes it's just hard, but yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.